... May I ask for permission to order you to please stand at the dedication place of the flag? Let us pray. Well, we thank you for this day in Ashland, Kentucky. We are most thankful for your blessings on us and the accomplishments we continue to experience in our city. We once again ask for your divine guidance and wisdom as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its people. Bless this Board of Mayor and Commissioners, our City Manager, our Department Heads, our employees, and most of all, our citizens. Bless those that attend us this evening and be with us throughout this evening, and we pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
And Mike Worsel, please send a pledge.
Stand and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most received by the agenda.
Sit.
All favor. We start receiving file minutes of our regular meeting October 10th, 2019. Second. Any discussion in those minutes? All favor.
Aye.
Here's reports, Commissioners.
Just want to welcome everybody this evening. Holiday is upon us. This is the last evening meeting, and then we'll have one meeting in November, one meeting in December, which is called noon. But if you've noticed, if you've been over at the park, our park workers are fast and furious, they're putting up all the displays for Winter Wonderland Live, so we're getting hot into the holiday season. We're out there. Just want to make mention tonight, I'm proud of our young people in our community. The girls at the high school are playing in the state semifinals tonight. They're an undefeated soccer team, and they're playing at the high school at seven o'clock. Also, the Kiwanis Bowl is going on at the same time at the stadium. And then tomorrow night, our Top Cats, it's senior night, we're eight and one, so invite you all out.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
I have a quick invitation to the Commission and anyone else who could be listening. Friday, November 1st, at 9:30 in the morning, Gil and Drug is opening next to Domino's, and they wanted to make sure that we were invited. Also, wanted to make note that they do take the city's insurance, for everybody out there.
I've got a couple really neat things to do. First of all, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas Ashland, Kentucky, as Mayor and Board Commissioners value the health and safety of all our citizens, whereas substance abuse and misuse in this nation has reached crisis level and is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the leading, three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas it is the goal of the Healthy Choices, Healthy Communities Substance Abuse Task Force and the City of Ashland to involve families, schools, businesses, faith communities, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas there are many activities planned during the Red Ribbon Campaign in the City of Ashland and our schools, whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd to 31st. Now therefore, I, Stephen Gilmore, Mayor of Ashland, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim October 23 to 31 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to the drug-freety of the City of Ashland. And it is, it is a horrible scourge throughout our country, and all of us have to be alert and aware, and do our part in any way we can. It's kind of like when, you know, I'm in a group about a cancer society, and they ask in a room, everybody raise their hand, it somehow is connected to someone with cancer or you have had it or have it, and every, every hand goes up. And I'm sure I can say the same thing this evening. How many of you have been affected or know people are affected by misuse of drugs, all of us? So, I don't know the answer, if there was an answer, we would be red already, but I know this, the process of collective work throughout our community among everyone, and not expecting only the homes and families that are under real duress over drugs, that let them attack it. And we certainly can't expect our police department to get them on. Those distributors, those people who come, are coming from everywhere, not necessarily within our community, but they're certainly here now. But all of us play a role, whether it is to help report what we see, be a good support service for friends and family that are going through trying times over it because it is so difficult. And I hope there's somebody here to accept this. Good. Diva, please come up. Thank you for all the work you're doing, please, how do you verify support?
Thank you, thank you for having me. We have a coalition, King's Stars and our Lady Belle Fund work together to really try to combat it.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, thanks, Stephen.
I want to mention that we did have a ribbon cutting at our new Ashland Toyota of Ashland yesterday night, and a huge crowd. And in talking with Clay Green, who, his dad actually is the founder of Green Toyota in Nicklesville and New Circle Road, but Clay and Mike Ayers, who is running this one, is actually gonna, he'd been running the one on, on New Circle Road, and I know that because I bought a car from him a few years ago, and I told him the other night that the only problem I know about Toyotas are that I keep getting this car, telling me it's a good time to trade mine in, and I'm never having a problem with it. Now, when I get a real problem, I slip it up there to Wes and say, "Oh, no, it's great, it's good you're not just getting on that." But I did tell him that, you know, Toyota's a great car. But they, they mentioned a couple of things, that in a short time, they've been owning it, it's been the best owning they've ever had anywhere. And I really liked this part, they had over a thousand applicants for the jobs up there, and there's somewhere between 60, 67 employees. I've already had my car in for a service, and, and my gosh, they, it's, they know what it was, I mean, not just telling you that they would necessarily give me a red carpet treatment, because I'm the mayor, you understand, but I didn't tell them I was the mayor, but boy, I mean, they met me as I pulled in that underneath, the girl with the clipboard, Mr. Gilmore, ready for you, come right over here, sign this, do that. They were very thorough, very quick, I was proud, I was in Ashland, Kentucky. But he said it's the best group of employees they've ever hired in opening a dealership. He said it was very difficult. Imagine, I don't know what you deal with a thousand, thousand applications, we probably only have about 800 here in the city, but anyway, he said they were very fortunate, the people they chose, he said they're just unbelievable. You know, polite, courteous, they show up, Wes, I mean, come on, you know, that, a lot of people nowadays, they don't think it's important to show up on time, and then always looking at the watch to leave early or whatever. But they're so happy, and I'm so proud, and the mayor, and talking about how great the employees were, from our entire area, I'm sure. But it, and it's going great, it looks great. And as I mentioned the other night, the property across, the city owns quite a bit of that property, and we've always, already been contacted by, you know, more than one person or group that are very interested in developing that side of the road too. So, it really isn't the city limits, but it is kind of the entry to Ashland there. So, that's, they've done a great part to make it look good, so we're very proud of that. Jerry, could you come up for a second, and I know you have some board members with you. I hope that you all read about, heard about the honor that our tennis center received, and it's due to a lot of people, but I will tell you this, I really believe Jerry Gross has been there since I was a little kid.
I'm a little older.
Well, maybe, I'm not that old either.
Thirty-some years.
Jerry does a great job, thirty-some years, and would you kind of, and the board members, Clay, I know you're, it's Mandy, I pointed a couple of people. Y'all stand up, we want to know who you are, if there's somebody here I don't know, Jerry, introduce your board members.
Now.
Sure. First of all, I'm going to thank the City and the Commissioners, you guys are very supportive of the tennis center. It's a special asset for the town, and many cities, larger cities, don't even have a nice tennis stadium. And so people recognize this for what we have. But I do want to recognize my board, I've got Melanie Thompson, Josh Blanton, Lyndi Lohman, and Clay Hill, and this is my mother-in-law Jane, she works for me too, but we've got a good group of people, and I'm blessed to have this group of Commissioners, because they helped me out tremendously. It's nice to have young people taking interest in the city, and these people are done it.
Yeah, that's why I appointed.
Yeah.
I'm unable to appoint him to more than one Commissioner at a time, I'm not sure which I could.
Well, there's been a couple others I've wanted too, and it's like, well, we're already on something else, so we can't have them, but we've got a good group of people, and they've really helped me out a lot, especially the last three years, I've been having some health issues, and I'm doing much better, but I do appreciate all these people.
Well, you know, we used to, people talk about, when we have visitors or family comes in from out of town, we, you know, we always drive by Blazer High School, as old as it is, it still looks great, and it's, it was far heaven's time, it still is. They drive by Central Park, they can't imagine a city our size that have 47 acre park, right in the middle, just beautiful. Well, the iconic tennis center is also one of the places they want to drive by, and fortunately, many, many times, that's the first thing they see, because they're driving into town or drive down that hill, and I'm very proud of it, that it's in Ashland. And Jerry, you've done an unbelievable job, and Jerry has had some health problems, some of which, you're very fortunate to be here with me tonight.
I've got a second chance, so I'm living life.
As you see, he looks great, he's as good as new, in my opinion, I think he would tell you the same. He's an unbelievable director over there, and head of that tennis center. I'm proud of our friendship and proud of everything he does, and the city will continue to stand ready to help it, absolutely, where you can.
Appreciate that very much.
And I'll give you a key to the city, so you can come back and forth easier. Okay. Thank you. Okay, City Manager, we'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, sir. Couple of, a couple of announcements. First off, a couple weeks ago, had some notifications that concerns about lighting down at Central Park. Had the Parks Team, Ashland Police Department, our Engineering Department, in close coordination with the electric company, had put some engineering assets on that. Thanks, Commissioner, for your involvement in that. Just want to let you know, they're, they're doing an analysis of that right now, and going to come forth with some recommendations here pretty soon. Also, we're still on board for a one November kickoff of the new phone system. We did plan on putting notifications out in utilities bills, there was a snafu in the numbers that were provided by a third, third-party provider that would actually have resulted in long-distance phone calls from people from the city, which I think would go over real well. So we have those new numbers, it's still going to kick off on the 1st of November. We will be posting the new numbers on the city Facebook, also on the city webpage, and with the help of the Ashland Daily Independent, we helped put an article out on that. The third thing I have tonight is I'd like to introduce Mr. Greg Copley, if you could step, step up, please. Mr. Copley is from, is from the University of Kentucky's Center for Applied Energy Research. He works with the Department of Local Government's Energy retrofit program. We met Mr. Copley and his team when the mayor and I were up at the Kentucky League of Cities Conference, and he briefed the entire audience on the energy savings performance contract, and it's something that, something I think the city would be very interested in. Mr. Copley's going to give a broad overview tonight, because it's going to result in Mayor and Commissioners, and you all making a decision if this is something we should pursue, but with that, Greg, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
I do, the Center for Applied Energy Research, part of the University of Kentucky, Go Blue, has a program with the Department of Local Government, as Mike said, the Local Government Energy retrofit program. And what this entails is an opportunity for local governments to have an energy assessment done on their facilities, and then enter into a contract with an energy service companies to upgrade the facilities, whether it be lighting, HVAC equipment, pumps, motors, whatever, whatever is failing or needs attention, where they will be improved, new equipment can come in, and the energy savings resulting from that will pay for the project. And this is over a 15 to 20-year time period, but it's a very comprehensive opportunity for local governments to take advantage of in order to plan for the future, quit kicking the can down the road, if that's what's going on on some of the equipment, as well as save some energy that's necessarily needed, because we know energy rates are not going to decline anytime soon.
That's interesting. I didn't get all of that in Covington the other day, but I came into here from the superintendent of schools, and we did do that, and I don't know, I'm trying to think if we got a grant from the state or actually to the law for it, but how it worked with the school system, and obviously, school, with the school, we changed every light in our district to LED, we did change some heavier equipment, HVACs and all that, and it was somewhere, somewhere in the $1 million, maybe a half, but the, I think it was Honeywell, I'm not sure, but they were doing them statewide. And they guarantee you X number of dollars savings every year that will offset, I mean, at the end of 15 years, taxpayers have all their money back, and it's all paid for. If it goes under that, that company pays the difference each year. And of course, you know, UK was involved in all of that, and I know the Department of Energy in Frankfurt, they were, they had given them, you know, the Stanford approval and all that, which I'm sure they have to the university. And it was basically a long draw, I mean, we had so many meetings with them to go for every school, whatever school needed, and what it was all going to bring down to, but it was a, it was absolute, you can't lose on this, which we feel very strong about it. And I know, just walked in Blazer High School the first time, I mean, I was up, you know, I was over there probably 10 years, teaching, coaching, and I guess what a difference, and I know the students are benefited from that. Lack of heat from the lighting we had, plus how bright it is, plus the energy savings, and some of the HVAC equipment is also included, so it's, I'm not trying to sell, sell that to you all, but I, but I have been involved in it, it works.
Well, you've done my job for me.
Am I right? Am I right?
Yes, sir.
But we were pretty excited about it. I know that sometimes it can't be that easy, it can't be that good or whatever, but it's, they had to sign the line too, saying that this is going to happen, so.
And one of the roles and the reasons why Department of Local Government and UK's involved is exactly what you just said, it's, it's not too good to be true, it actually is successful.
And, you know, Kentucky Power are always sending the circulars, trying to give us a safe, you know, turn everything out, and all that, and you think, well, you know, there's something wrong, they probably weren't running, everything running all the time, but no, they don't, they have, the influx is fine, it's saving the energy for everybody else, you know.
Just quickly, what, what my role will be, if y'all decide to go ahead with this, is to draft the RMP, basically get it approved through the local, local officials. We have a mandatory walkthrough date, where any energy service company that wants to participate has to attend that. We tour the facilities, and then I give them about eight weeks into 10 weeks to come back with their proposals. Then I hope the committee will be formed and review the proposals, and selections will be made. All of this, up to the point where the city has to sign a contract, is free, there's no obligation financially to the, to the city at any time until the actual audit line is signed. One of the other benefits to this is if a energy service company and, and doing their proposals, miss something that needs to be done, they missed a, missed count of lights, they did something, made a mistake, then they have to eat that as part of the change, there's no change orders allowed, once a contract is signed, and this is under state law. As the mayor's mentioned, K through 12's done, they've done, done these across the state, city, state parks, corrections facilities, all the universities have done, and the community colleges.
We've been in several districts that have already implemented that plan, so, I mean, and they all, you know, were, I appreciate the university involved in doing this, Department of Local Government, or cities.
Gives credibility to the, to the whole program, we think.
Absolutely, sir, we think so too.
I can do you.
I use the term a lot, free chicken, and when I heard you all brief the other, you know, a couple weeks ago, I thought, this free chicken, and so I think it's a great opportunity for the city. I appreciate you coming up. This is actually Greg's second trip up here, he came up, talked to a lot of our staff members to, because I wanted him to explain it to them on what this was, because a lot of good ideas have a lot of extra work that's associated with it, it's really not. They do all the heavy lifting, like you said, they do the RMP, they got the energy companies that are out there, they all know their reputation, so we appreciate you making the second trip up here, and we're proud to move forward with you.
So, my question is, am I, are we going to ask me to do it, or are we direct? Okay.
Well, uh...
No, let me know, we're forward with you. Okay. One, no? Okay.
You didn't waste a trip.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot. Well, I'll let City Manager kind of, we have another little presentation, and we wanted to step here in a second, and I want to tell you why, and I'm assuming, and to make it, we'll probably have to sit down with you and go through a lot of these details, because we wouldn't want to read right. But while we were at Kentucky League of Cities a couple weeks ago, their keynote speaker for that, the general session, was a fellow named Roger Brooks, and he just came from Seattle, but he's been all over the place, he's been in Kentucky several places too, but he is a, he's written books, he's a downtown revitalization specialist, expert, and his PowerPoint, we drank all the Kool-Aid he had with him that day, but he kind of, he reminded me a whole lot of West Johnson, inasmuch as he was very entertaining, but he had a lot of substance. Uh? What? Well, I said, buddy, he had a lot of substance, I didn't mean it like that, and I really didn't mean it like that.
That starts bad, you know, the audience.
Whether it's a commercial, or your comedy time, or doing videos for a candidate for mayor, which you're so astute at, but he did, what reminded me of you, he had us, he had us, he had that whole auditorium, you know, 500 people were just right there, and when his session ended, we were, we were already looking for where he was going for his mini session, and, and we had to shove two old ladies out of their chairs. Do what you gotta do. No, we really didn't do that, but we wanted to shove them, because we think they just looked for a chair to sit down before he paid attention to the essay, but everybody else wanted in that one too, so it was very difficult, probably about 100 to be in there, so the 500 wanted in there. But we were able also to get ahold of him immediately and tell, talk to him briefly, that we wanted more information, we wanted follow-up. We think that, we just think it kind of piggybacks a little bit, Mr. Clark had talked to Rotary, she talked to us, I've been to Greenville, she went to Greenville, you have a tendency to get fired up when you've just been there. Well, it just so happened, she hadn't been back very long, and we go to Covington, and this guy's talking, and he's showing his PowerPoint was phenomenal, and I'm sure you'll see a lot of this, because citizens, business, business owners, people that makes the difference to downtown Ashland, because he will, he will talk about, you know, the heart of your city as a downtown, and he showed cities our size, a lot of big cities, how a corner of a block that did something different there changed the whole attitude downtown. And he also talked in terms of things we've talked about here, and I really don't care to throw something like this out, but he, he talked about things, and the manager, I kept looking at him like he's had to beat Ashland before, you know, where we have, and I'm not trying to pick anybody out, don't get me wrong, but I am the mayor, so I can make blanket statements sometimes, but you know, we had First Friday, you know, and lots of stores shut down. Stores should be open, and we didn't get to talk specifically about events like that downtown, but he brought up and said, hey, if your stores are closing at five o'clock, you're already in trouble, and you're downtown. And he said, they've got, you open a little later, stay open a little later, you know, people get off work, you know, kind of, so, that's just one little minutia of the kind of things he talked to us about, but we're, it's probably going to be for the most part, Chris, at the hotel, the sessions there, and they're going to be, we're going to put things in the paper to, because it's coming the first week of November. So this is kind of not long-range thing, this is quick. We were able to get him, he's totally booked for a year, but it just so happened, he had a couple openings before Christmas, so we tried to grab this quickly we could. And we probably forget a lot of them before we got with the mechanics. It comes spring, we say, who are you, what are you doing here? I don't remember. But anyway, Mayor, you want to talk about a few of the little things?
Yes, sir. A couple of things that really stood out, like the mayor said, it wasn't just his charisma, it was also the facts that he brought up, that he used. They've inventoried over 2,000 cities, and they took the top 400 that have very successful downtowns. He pulled all this into tangible information, it's not just this broad sweeping stuff, maybe look at this, maybe look at that, he made the connections on why this equals that. One of the things that he said stuck with me is, is your downtown is really a litmus test for your community, it's a downtown for your visitor, or it's a litmus test for your visitors, it's a litmus test for your citizens, it's a litmus test for businesses that want to be there, and I think everybody that's been here for more than a day knows how special our downtown was. Some of the things he said were very encouraging, like the mayor said, man, you're talking about Ashland. But then he said some other things that really caused me to pause. One of the reasons I always fall in love with this town is the history of the town, because I grew up in military cities that were very transient, didn't have what we have here in Ashland. But then he made a point, he goes, you know, historical towns are a dime a dozen, and you, you know, I think about it just in the Rust Belt that we have here in Kentucky, and it's very true, a lot of downtowns are very similar to what we have. But then he talked about the things that we could do collectively, and it's not the city leading the effort, it's the, it's the businesses, it's the community, it's the people that come together and say, what makes us different? Another thing that he said that resonated with me was, if your motto or your vision can be, if you can replace your name with any other city, and it doesn't tell who you are, then it's probably not good, it doesn't set you apart from other cities. So, the people that we're going to gather, the key leaders in the community, from the different areas of influence, are going to help define what that is for us. He used the example of Wyoming, draw a blank.
Jackson Hole.
Jackson Hole, Wyoming, town of about 10,000 people, he talked about clustering businesses, clustering like things, they've gone on the Western theme, so Western food, Western clothing, Western culture, and people flock and come to that. So, if we believe in this, if this is something that our community says, hey, this is a way that we need to move toward, then our community needs to define what makes us special, what will draw people here. And I'm sure, as I say that, everybody in the crowd has an idea of what that may or may not be. But the timing of it was fantastic, the trip that we had down to Greenville, a lot of the things that Greenville has done to become successful and to be who they are today, again, I want to reiterate, we're not trying to become Greenville, we're trying to be the best Ashland that we can be. But a lot of the things that they implemented over 20 years ago, and he's worked, I followed up with him on the phone call, he's worked extensively with Greenville, are part of, are part of his plan that he's laid out. And the timing of that, and also the comprehensive plan that Chris and his team are working on, it's just all dovetailing very nicely together right now, so that, I think that's why I personally got excited about it. There is going to be a public information portion of this, to get public input, and like the mayor said, we'll make sure that we advertise that, so we get max participation.
Yeah, and again, he mentioned a real important point I talked about before, and I think Mr. Clark saw it, and talked to the people in Greenville, we're going to be facilitators here. You know, we're not going to say, no, we don't do that, we want to do this over here, no, that's not what the city government's going to do. We're providing this service from this expert in the field, and I know usually you'd think there's an expert, he doesn't live here, you don't want to come in. This guy's got a heck of a track record, all over the world, really, but certainly in cities like ours. And most of you, I'm sure, will have a chance to hear him and see what's going on, and I think you'll be as, as kind of enthusiastic about as I am. And along with saying that, we have a really special guest here tonight with us, Cindy Wiseman, who is, is a marketing director, can you help me with Kentucky Power?
I'm Vice President, External Bears and History Service.
That's what I said. And, and because, first of all, these kind of people don't come free, and leaning on Kentucky Power, which just dropping on them... Kentucky Power, which just dropping on them to look at, you know, we were gonna look at a bunch of avenues to raise the money, we did not want to use tax money for this, and again, here's one of these things that Kentucky Power has, does in every city, every community, to help that community grow, they, they were so generous to come up with the money that we needed in a grant, they have grant funds for things just like this, just like this, so they, they were quick to respond, and I can't say enough for them, and so she has...
I think they've got here a present, tonight, the room check, I'm not sure where that is, but...
You like the same thing.
Yeah, I'll just talk a little bit about the program, it's the K-Peg Grant Program, some of you may be familiar with it, it's Kentucky Power Economic Growth Grant Program, and, you know, we're really involved in economic development projects, it's a win-win for our company, but our customers too, the more customers we have, it affects rates, keeps rates lower, so we're, that's, utilities all over the country are involved in economic development, more so than ever before, and especially AAP, our parent company, and so as you know, we serve from Ashland, which is where our headquarters is, down to Pikeville, and then to Hazard, about one hundred and sixty-five thousand customers, so we're actively involved, and we're very fortunate to have this grant program, where we've supported a lot of causes over the past couple of years, and I'm very happy to present this check.
Here, so, give me a picture of you.
In the front here, in the cap, or not, but it's made to the city of Ashland in the amount of twenty-two thousand and five hundred dollars to cover the event that you were talking about, and the training, the plans.
It's a big deal.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. You can clap, I mean for... The thing of it is, it doesn't weigh technically, my name's on the check, which I thought would be.
Thank you very much.
You had to pay the wrong, you had to order the wrong direction.
I was made you for the selfie.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, this point in our meeting is public participation, if you have an issue or a concern that's not on the agenda, that you'd like to bring to the board, board commissioners, we would ask you to hold your comments to five minutes or less, when you come up, we'd like to have your name and your address, and that's about it. Anybody like to line?
Yeah. I'm Mike Works, I live at eight oh four E Street, Ashland, Kentucky. Mary Kellmore was my history teacher in junior high school, I don't know if y'all know that.
I taught in the pledge allegiance to.
Yeah, you taught me the pledge allegiance.
Did a good job on that.
Thank you. Only thing I'm gonna bring up, on November the eighth, at the veterans cemetery, the families of the people that are buried there, they'll be putting flags out. Right now, there's eleven hundred and seventy-five veterans buried in that cemetery, and on November, I think it's Saturday, December, they'll be putting the wreaths for Christmas on there, so just wanted to let y'all know what was...
Yeah, and I want y'all to know, Mike has been extremely instrumental in these flags being put on graves at appropriate times, when I was in the school system.
This may make thirty-five years continuously I've done this.
He contacted me every year, when I suited the tenant, to make sure we could help, and get kids to help, or whatever the case might be. I appreciate your zealousness for your former victims.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else like to come before our board? Please, good luck.
My name's Nakia White, I live at thirty-one thirty-seven Bath Avenue.
Say your name again.
Nakia White.
Okay.
What I'm coming here for is, next door to me is a recovery house, it's a ditch and recovery group. They have made, this is my daughter, they have made vulgar comments to her, they're very disrespectful, they're out all hours of the night, hooting and hollering, talking about drugs, talking about stuff that they're gonna do to their ladies when they get out, or whatever. There's no supervision at all, although there's supposed to be supervision there till like eleven o'clock, I think. Not only that, there's another house on down the street, between Twenty-Ninth and Thirty-First. Don't really have a whole lot of problems out of them because they're on down, but this one house that I'm talking about is right next door to me. I mean, there's like eighteen grown men in this house, making comments to her, you know, googly eyes at her, being a parent, you know, you just want to protect her.
Sure.
Not only her, but I have a little one back there too.
Yeah. Man, that's wicked.
Also, there's a couple other things.
We're concerned, we're very concerned for you. We get people up for a variety of reasons to have a neighborhood problem, next door, whatever. I don't care what it is, I picture me next door, I don't want you to live next door to anything, I, I wouldn't want to, and this is, this is a real looming problem in a lot of places, I think, but I don't know who exactly is responsible for these recovery houses, you, I don't know, but let me assure you, we'll, we'll get on it first thing in the morning, and try to get somebody to report it, if it doesn't appear there's anybody accountable over there to be supervision, that, that would seem to be a real issue.
Well, I mean, I guess they have what they call, what did they call it more, that guy, peer support or something like that, maybe?
Dorm captain.
Something like that, and like, it was so bad, like, one day last week, there's an old man that lives a couple, like, a couple houses down past it, they said something to him, told him they were all gonna jump in, whip his butt, and this man felt so threatened, he actually pulled out a loaded shotgun. This, this, and my neighborhood is like, right around the corner where that man was murdered not too long ago, I talked to Mr. Fulman and Matt about the homeless people that are in the neighborhood, I mean, to the point where I don't even want my kids to go outside, because we find needles in the road, we find spoons, I mean, it's just, I know you can get that kind of stuff everywhere, I mean, you know, you might think that high-class neighborhoods don't have it, but they do too, but it's just, I'm not the only concerned citizen there, there's other ones, we didn't know what we had to do, as far as like if we had to get a petition, or whatever, and we were all gonna come together, but they've all had things to do, so I left work to come here.
Bless your heart.
To, to address this, because, I mean, I believe everybody, there's another chance, that's not what I'm saying at all, but like, when this house went in there, we were not informed it was going in there or anything, it was just like, boom, eighteen men in the house. So, it's just been a sore spot, and that's not the first issue that I've had with them, I mean, they've been there like two years or so, something like that, but it's just like, it gets worse and worse and worse with the different groups that come through there.
Well, you don't need petition, well, I mean, we, we see it, I mean, we, we know that there are probably people afraid to come down here and talk about it, or some people won't sign anything at any time, so we, we understand it's something like, it's reverberating problem around here, but this one neighbor next door is all we need to know, and we'll, we're gonna do all we possibly can. Anyplace like that has to have more than a peer supervisor, you know, I'll tell you what it means to me, be just one voice.
Yeah, basically.
And it doesn't work that way, anyway, we'll see what we can do. Is it Nakia?
Nakia, yeah.
You come to the right place.
Well, I hope so.
Guarantee, we will, we will take care of this, no problem.
Thank you, though, not that the guy pulled the shotgun, Officer Jordan came, and he told us as a neighborhood, like, my mom even has heard some of the stuff, so she came with me, but, um, he told us, you know, go down to the city commissioners meeting, tell them your concerns, and see what happens, and like I said, I've talked to Matt many times, messaged him on Facebook, even Mr. Fulman back there, and some things have gotten a little bit better, but it's like, when, like, they're not supposed to be outside after eleven, they wait till their supervisor leaves, and then the cops come by, and then it's like, they're out, just all over the place.
So, the supervisor doesn't even stay there?
No, sir, he leaves at eleven o'clock at night, and they're free from eleven o'clock to whatever.
It'd be better if he left at ten to two, or something, if he don't leave anywhere.
Exactly, they're not supposed to have girls over there, there's people stopping by all the time, and then another issue that I had, Arizona, what was that address?
Thirty-one forty-six.
Thirty-one forty-six, I messaged Mr. Perkins about, they are spraying them drugs out of their life crazy, I mean, I came home one day, twenty minutes I was there, I seen six cars blow up, they walked in, walked right back out, and go down the street.
Thirty-one forty-six Bath?
Yes, sir.
You're on candid camera right now, so, well, let me assure you that we've been making a lot of us, and we'll continue to do that.
And I think that, when you sent me that, chief got it, I think this may be the city manager.
I sent it to the chief, I just got it this evening, I sent it to the chief before I came in to meet, I didn't know it was you who sent the name.
Yes, it was me.
I, I think I cut your name out, to protect, if you wanted that.
Yeah, I just gave you the address, I think, except on mine, he had the name.
Yeah, I just want my neighborhood to be better, where my kids can go outside, and I'm not worried.
People want Ashland to be as, as great a place as any other part of Ashland.
Oh, yeah, I grew up there back when I was younger, and it was a great neighborhood, and now it's just like, I don't even want my kids to go outside.
It was always a great neighborhood, when I was a kid, I lived in Central Park, and all my friends went to Colts, you know, I lived up in there, they were basically Armco homes and national homes, and everybody took care of the property, and now probably every other house is a rental house, which it spells trouble, because all landlords aren't confident, just, there are plenty of them, but not all of them, you know, you need one.
Right.
Probably a real problem, but the, the recovery house, I don't know who that's under, we're, we're gonna research it though, the manager will get on it, Mr. Moore, our attorney, will get on it, so to see what we can do.
Yeah, I can tell you that, I know the, the, um, the home office, or whatever, is right there across from Taco Bell, and that building that's right there on the corner.
Really?
Yeah, they're home, they're...
On which, it used to be a service station?
No, it used to be a doctor's office.
Oh, it was that way.
Imagining Center, correct?
There is your...
Yeah, there is, you should be there, and you must be at a place that's gonna be all out there.
Okay, well, we're gonna do, I mean, I, I don't even, I can't give you just a positive, what I will guarantee is, to Mr. Goody, is that we're gonna get into this one, and, and I know that we can put some parameters there, so if we don't have them, we can come up with them. I mean, if God, you just can't, are, are they, well, I don't know, we'll find out the, the genre of each person in there, probably, what the status is.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Glad you came.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a big problem, just think about yourself, if it was next door to you, I mean, that, that is a serious problem, and, and it's not an easy one, it really isn't easy. Y'all have, whoever is responsible for that, they're gonna have a pretty good comeback, but I don't have a comeback with not supervision, somebody's gotta supervise this house.
With these federal dollars coming down with the, our...
This recent thing?
Yes, I mean, I surely think we could absolutely employ those dollars to help our police department battle this.
We expect you guys just clear it up tomorrow, you know that.
We'll take care of it.
Well, I know you, you'll do all you can, or he'll try to give you something else to help you do it.
I'll talk to her after we...
Okay, we appreciate it, thanks. Anyone else like to, we thank for being here, if you're, if you don't want to hear all of our, you think it's my thing business, but it's pretty important to us, but you can, you can leave anytime you choose, okay? Just don't make a lot of racket. I don't have a lot of intentions, man. Thank you all for being here, tennis center people, thank you Cindy, thanks, appreciate it, play, receive it, thank you, God, receive that. Wes, my favorite crash dummy. Thanks, Mike.
I will, I will.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, see y'all later.
Okay, old business, sign, may.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky repealing ordinance number one fourteen, series of two thousand nineteen, which approved change order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky, and Southern Ohio Transit Highway, regarding water line replacement on U.S. twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion, all favor?
Out of B. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor to execute public transportation grant agreement between the City of Ashland, Ashland Bus System and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for fiscal year twenty-twenty capital state match contract grant in the amount of seventy thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Second.
Any discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Out of C.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky repealing ordinance number one eleven, series of two thousand sixteen, which adopted a fee schedule for credit and or debit card payments processed by the Department of Finance.
Second.
Any discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
Out of M. E.
Second reading...
I'm sorry.
You're, you're forgiven.
Well, you quick on that, weren't you?
Quick reprimand.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Olive Hill Trucking Inc. for the purchase of gravel, stone, and sand for the Department of Public Services and the Department of Utilities.
Second.
Any discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
Out of M. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Olive Hill Trucking Inc. for the purchase of gravel, stone, and sand for the Department of Public Services and the Department of Utilities.
Second.
Any discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
Out of M. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting amendment ten for city employees and amendment nine for the fire department unit for the City of Ashland, Kentucky Medical Care Plan and Summary Plan, adopted by ordinance forty-six, two thousand twelve, previously amended to meet all required Affordable Care Act requirements as well as Kentucky mandated changes.
Second.
Any discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
Out of G. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky amending ordinance number one thirty-seven, series of two thousand, as previously amended, relating to the traffic flow in the alley running parallel to Greenaville Avenue and Winchester Avenue, from Eleventh Street to Twelfth Street, and Twelfth Street to Thirteenth Street, and on Twelfth Street between Greenaville Avenue and Winchester Avenue.
Second.
Any discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Yeah, there, old business. Consent agenda?
Resolution, the City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the local city commissioners, October twenty-four, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Any, any discussion on any item?
The only thing I, I want to comment on is, I, I noticed in the past couple meetings, we've had some, a lot of budget adjustments, and we're kind of straying from our existing budget, so how are we gonna, how do we, how can we better stick with the budget as planned moving forward? Is this something, I mean, is this just part of...
I think some things are predictable, some things aren't predictable, some will be taken care of internal to the department that has requested those, others are, for example, the, the one on the truck, not on the fire department, that wasn't one that's predictable, but will save money in the long run, so I think we're, I think the staff and I are trying to do our best job of making predictive, predictive analysis as much as possible, and you know, another one that jumps out is the, the rate study, you know, something we approved in June, but we really technically didn't get it into the budget, so we knew about it, but I think just keeping an eye, really tracking data long term, to help us predict that, I think is, is part of it, which I think we're doing a better job of, but I understand, I understand your concern, Commissioner, and I think it's valid right now, some of these things will, will have to come out of our general fund reserve, fortunately, the city's done a phenomenal job over the past ten years, Tony, Michelle, to get that to where it is now, which gives us some flexibility, and some of these things that do pop up, and at the end of the day, you all make the value judgment if that's important or not.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's part of, you know, we look at cost, and we look at, we, we don't want to burden ourselves with death by a thousand cuts by the end of the budget year, you know, they seem small now, but they add up over time, and one of the things I, you know, I constantly worry about, and you know, I work, as I've talked to you many times, about FedEx for health insurance, and I worry about, you know, unbudgeted costs relating even to healthcare, and those can skyrocket unexpectedly due to claims, and how are we on that even? Do we know?
We've had two straight good years, I think the team will say that that ebbs and flows in the, in the end, it balances itself out to where it is, pretty predictive, but you can have a bad year.
Right, and it can be in the hundreds of thousands to the millions of dollars, and that unplanned, are we, are we okay if that, those kind of things come up?
Basically, you're not seeing those a million dollars over budget, one point eight million...
This year, you're not seeing those a million dollars over budget, one point eight million more than last year.
So, we're one point eight million dollars over budget for, for.
Well, that's probably a million more than last year, millions over budget in this year, you're not seeing.
For healthcare?
Michelle, is, is that predominantly due to, we've got some long-term illnesses?
Candy could probably speak better to that. Um, we did have, we had a lot of type of that.
We still have the system we had when I was mayor before, don't we, the?
We have the insurance that were a hundred thousand dollars.
But, you know, we had a savings account that built up for somebody, did we still do that, don't we, Candy? Yeah. It, I mean, I hope employees try to protect that, thanks for building, 'cause I know the problem we had when we developed that plan was every time somebody had a bad headache or chest cold, they went to emergency room.
We did.
Not, not the express place, but they go to the emergency room. And, and I think we did try to at least change that attitude, 'cause it'll, it'll break you up big time. And, see, I think our supervisors from time to time, uh, without talking specifically about anybody or of any illness, would just remind our employees in each department, kind of protect your health plan by never doing frivolous health calls, you know, I guess one way to say it, but if they know it's there, they, you know, don't worry about using it all the time, I guess. But it, you know, it's, it's city government and I, the employees, that I have a chance to talk to at any length, and I talk to them about, you know, we're, we're citizen employees, you know, we're the taxpayers, we're their backing to call to take care of the storage of the money, and we do have great benefits, and it's a great place to work, and, and I'm proud of that, it's the way it ought to be, but you kinda, as a group, protect that, you know, you protect that too. So, I, all of us, every employee has a role to play in protecting that. You know, you, you have some people who have a real severe illness, you know, I've, I've known it for a couple hundred grand anyway, one person, so. That's a good, good question to bring up, and then, of course, we always just look at throwing the shell.
And overtime too was the other thing I was gonna ask you about, is are we, how are we doing on overtime? 'Cause that's always, that was a big issue for us in our first term as well.
Can you respond to that, Al, Mr. Grubbe? Overtime, where we're at, Michelle?
How are we doing on?
Okay. Anything else on consent agenda? All favor?
Aye.
Close lines, I'd be. New business, I'd be.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky notwithstanding provisions of ordinance number fifty-one, series of two thousand seventeen, as previously amended, granting a two point eight increase retroactive to June thirty, two thousand nineteen, to those employees affected by said arrangements.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
I'd be.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor to execute a agreement between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and My Town TV to record, broadcast, and post meetings of the Ashland City Commission for a period of one year in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Let me say, to My Town, we're very fortunate to have you. People comment to me all the time, the clarity of your production, and they do appreciate me being able to see the meetings and if nothing else, just kind of keep track of what's going on. They may not have any issues, so I think we're getting a very professional job and, and a very good quote. Appreciate that.
I appreciate you guys. I feel very fortunate that you're in the middle of town.
Yeah.
In, in my old building, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. All favor?
Aye.
Close lines, I'd be.
I'd be. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, notwithstanding the provisions of ordinance number fifty-one, series of two thousand seventeen, as previously amended, authorizing an exception to the salary chart retroactive to March fourth, two thousand nineteen, and authorizing all subsequent adjustments to set affected salary.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
I'd be.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a letter of understanding between the city of Ashland and Roger Brooks International, Inc. for professional services to create a fast-track community action plan for the city in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close lines, I'd be.
Reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, municipal order, the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor to execute and submit a proposal for a project fund seventy-seven, project-based vouchers at low apartments for low and moderate income families at projected cost of fifty-eight thousand two hundred and eight dollars per month to be paid by the Department of Housing and Urban Development through the Housing Choice Voucher Program.
Any discussion?
I just wanna, full disclosure, I'm a landlord and I have, I am participating in the HUD program, and I won't be voting on this matter, but I do, do wanna, I do think it's important enough to ask them about information in regards to this project. I just, because I know what rents I charge, it's seven hundred and fifty-five ninety-five per unit.
They have a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedrooms, and that's an average of what those units would be. There's a mix, a different size, so that's an average of everything.
Is there a different, is there an increase in the pool of money we have from the federal government to pay this?
No, it's using our current allocation.
Currents, okay, so, well, can you, do you know what the previous rents were for the same location?
I have it in my office, but I don't know that one.
Okay. 'Cause I, I, I mean, I charge significantly lower than this, and I think that's what's approved by HUD, so.
These are within the current, uh, market rents, um, which they're allowed to charge.
Okay. And, so, my other question is, so, based on that, are we seeing an incre, have you seen an increase in the past couple years with people needing thi, this kind of housing?
We have a deficit of affordable decent housing.
Right, that's what I thought.
This will improve citywide. Not only are they doing our seventy-seven vouchers, but they have a hundred and fifty-two units there, they're rehabbing all the units. But this assistance is just for seventy-seven of them.
Of them.
But the whole community will feel the impact of the units.
Miss Worrice, they're totally renovating them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, not just this building though, more than one, right?
There's sixteen buildings on this property, they're all going to be.
Upgraded significantly.
Upgraded, so it's a hundred and fifty-two units.
Yeah, right, okay.
And this, I should say too, all this housing will be low to moderate income families, but the people that are really struggling in the community will have really nice units to move into.
Yeah, I hear, and, and I know all the commissioners here, here too, you know, we, we see people daily struggling to make ends meet, and we see them struggling with housing. Has the commission ever considered having an advisory board similar to the housing authority that advises for scope towers just for, to assist you, Lorraine, in, in seeing what our community needs?
I don't know if that's been proposed as a board. Assisted housing goes out in the community to get comments for our annual plan and our five-year plan, but it's difficult to get people involved.
I understand.
But having a board that actually would shape our policies and get the word out would be beneficial.
I, I really think we need to consider that. I think it's helped, I think Commissioner Clark here on the housing authority board for scope, and, and I'm sure they appreciate your input for them, and I think, if you, if you think it's a good idea, you're administering the program, I, I think we seriously need to consider this moving forward.
Yeah, y'all, y'all kind of discuss it and see how you'd want it set up, if you, you want a board, and what, I'm sure we approve it. It's gotta, it might be a big help.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, yeah. All favor?
Aye.
Close lines, I'd be.
I'd be. Reading and adoption of a municipal order titled, municipal order, the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing director of mayor to execute the twenty-twenty Kentucky Recycling Grant Program Agreement through the Kentucky Department for Environmental Protection Division of Waste Management for a litter abatement program.
Anytime I see the word recycling in an ordinance, I'm excited, so.
You have two hundred and fifty.
That's it, that's it.
Maybe, maybe. All favor?
Aye.
Close lines, I'd be. Any other new business? We have a, need a motion to go into executive session to discuss individual personnel matter.
Motion.
Second.
Actually, Mayor, I'd like to amend that motion to add an item to the executive session that would include, uh, property acquisition.
Got it. Property acquisition, individual personnel matter. Those are only two items to be discussed and no vote will be taken. We may come back out, I don't know what the discussion's about right now, but we, there will be no vote back there, and chance are we'll be voted out afterwards. And if you're interested, we're gonna recess this meeting, so we'll give a second meeting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock in the morning. One item to attend to? What, what we got tomorrow morning? We'll just, just run the agenda, okay? So, if you wanna come down in the morning, we'll, we'll still be here. I've got different tiles we don't know before coming down here. Okay, we're in recess for executive.
We need to vote, we need to vote on that.
Okay. Everybody, uh, executive session.
Aye.
Aye.